Five o'clock. And I'd like to call the Dunstable Select Board meeting to order. This evening's meeting is taking on a little different format. You know, our intention here is to have an open discussion with the Grotton regarding resolution of PFAS contamination issue at the high school. And so, kind of a ground rule here a little bit, we're going to do some introductions. Anybody that is in the audience here tonight that is planning to speak, please identify yourself, along with your name and obviously with your name and with your title, so that our scribe, which is Sufain, can capture those meeting minutes appropriately. And so, I'd like to go around the table first. I'm Ron Michael, Chairman of the Dunstable Select Board.
Please advance, Mr. Vice Chair of the Dunstable Select Board.
John Aviant, Chair of the Water Commission of Dunstable.
Jason Silva, Town Administrator at Dunstable.
Dave Tully, Water Board, Town of Dunstable.
Sufain, the Executive Assistant to the Board.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. And I'd like to call the Grotton Select Board to order this evening. And as Ron's mentioned, we're gathered together to try to put our heads together and talk about some issues related to dealing with the PFAS issue with the regional school district that we're partnering with, but also the impact of contiguous properties there, too. So, that's sort of the purpose of the meeting. And at the end of the night, hopefully, we can be on a fast track to entering into municipal agreement to make some things happen. So, I'll turn to my left and ask people to just introduce themselves.
Peter Cunningham.
Correct, yes. Thank you very much. He's the Vice Chair.
And I'm John Riley, the Vice Chair of the Grotton Select Board.
Becky Tyne, a member of Grotton Select Board.
Allison Minugian, also a member of Grotton Select Board.
Matt Pizzani, also a member of the Grotton Select Board.
All right, great. Thank you, Board Members, and thanks for reminding me who I am.
Once in a while. Yeah, great. So, I'd like to open this, and I'm going to kind of talk a little bit, because there are some folks here tonight that may, in fact, not be completely aware of what we're gathered here for tonight. Back in April or March of 22, the Mass DEP, they came forward and identified to the Grotton Dunstable School District that they had significant contamination in their wells. And the wells were used, obviously, for drinking water, they were also used for irrigation. The wells are contaminated with PFAS, which is a long acronym that I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce. Spell out. But it's a forever chemical. It's tied to, as a significant cancer-causing chemical. The derivative of it at the high school and at other locations, but specifically at the high school, the derivative of that, now, how did it get there? It got there through the use of firefighting foam back when the high school was built. There was a fire at the high school outside that burned tires that were being used and shredded to make the track. Fight Department, at that time, as was practicing, used an extinguishing chemical called foam, and the foam contains this material. I'm not aware as to how much foam was used or how much water was mixed with it, but it all got into the groundwater and had seeped into the wells and has since been detected as a plume, an underground plume, and is traveling into Dunstable and has contaminated several residential wells east of the high school. And the school district has been really responsible for this problem up to this point. Up to this point, the two towns have gotten together and decided that we're going to work together to bring about a resolution of permanently tying the high school into a municipal water supply, along with the homes that are in the area adjacent to the high school where this chemical has been found in the wells. The contamination rate at the high school, the detectable rate at the high school, is very significant. It's caused the DEP to tell the high school not to use the water to drink or cook with it, and they are presently using bottled water for that activity. And so, that's kind of the 10,000-foot discussion about what the issue is and why we're gathered here tonight. And so, there have been a number of discussions. These discussions have been ongoing between the Water Board, the Select Boards. There are several engineers involved in this, the high school engineer, the towns have engineers. So, there's a lot of engineers involved in it, and the state is actively involved in it. We are not in this alone, but DEP has been working with us, too, as well, to identify the problem and possible remedies to it. And so, these discussions have been ongoing on a relatively long basis now, probably, I don't know, 18 months, 22 months, something like that. And so, the meeting tonight is to get the two Select Boards together and others to try to come to a common understanding and do some consensus thinking as to what the right approach is for this. So, that's kind of the 10,000-foot view of it. And before we start, anybody with any questions in public forum?
If I could add one thing, Ron. The other thing, I think, you mentioned, the state's involved, the DEP. And we're in a situation where we don't have a whole lot of time, I think, to come up with a solution that's acceptable to them. They've made it known, so the school district, that they want to see a plan, a plan going forward. And if we're unable to do that, I think collectively as towns, then some of the options are probably less attractive to us, it sounds, too. So, it's really hopeful that I think we can get to that point tonight.
Okay. So, with that being said, there are a lot of folks that are involved in this, and one of the participants in the discussion and possible resolution is Town Pepple. And Pepple's municipal water supply is being considered as a municipal tie-in to the high school, which would then, obviously, not use its drinking wells, and those wells would be idled and possibly abandoned, and they would be served by a municipal water supply. And one of the options is to tie the school and the houses in Dunstable into Pepple's water supply and kind of create a regional approach to it. And so, with us tonight, we have Paul Brickman from the Town of Pepple, and we're going to ask Paul to walk through his presentation and talk about the Pepple component of this.
Okay, so I will be right at the left. How's that? So, I just wanted to give a little bit of, kind of, a background, how Pepple has experienced PFAS itself, because you guys, Grotton, the high school, aren't alone. We have our own PFAS issues, and how we got kind of tied up in this regional solution. So, from a history standpoint, we started testing in March of 2021. That was the first test that we were required to do. And when they came back, we had Bemis, the standard as of this current time is 20 parts per trillion of PFAS in the water. That PFAS is a total of six different PFAS chemicals, and that's the Mass DEP limit. Bemis came back very, very low, non-detectable most of the time. Jersey came back less than 20, and our Nashua water supply came back at greater than 20. So, our reaction was, I don't have to have this Nashua online, I don't want to put this PFAS water out for people. I can provide my own capacity at that point by shutting it down. So, I shut it down. So, our reaction was, let's get some public input into this, figure out what we need to do, how to move forward. We formed a task force, and the task force sat down and kind of played out all the different options. We looked at all kinds of things. Looked at, do we connect up to Nashua? Do we go look for another water supply? What are the things that we need to do? Because we have one well offline, because the PFAS is too high, and that particular water source has iron and manganese as a serious component, so it gets very challenging and very expensive to treat that water supply. So, I got to be cost-effective in my solutions. We looked at connections, a connection, an extension to Dunstable at that point, and this is long before I'd heard of the high school. We were talking about this idea. Looking at water supplies, other water supplies in my town. The river. Everyone might think the river's great. Well, the river has been tested at 70 parts per trillion PFAS. So, this PFAS is ubiquitous, it's everywhere. It's in my water supply. So, we screened out 13 plus and minus options, there's various components of that, and we came up with a plan. And our plan was, Nashua road water supply, until I have another source to replace that, I've essentially got that mothball. I'm allowed to turn that on, I just have to let everyone know I'm putting that water out. I don't want to do that. And so, right now, that plant is mothball, and I'm looking to replace that water supply in some fashion. My Bemis, well under the limit, well under the proposed EPA limit, so I'm going to monitor and protect. I need to do protection at that site. Jersey, I'm near 15, almost into the, near that 20 range, I need to treat that water. So, that's my plan, is to go through that process there. So, I have two ways of looking at new supplies. I have new supplies by extending my water system to Dunstable, which would provide me with a known source of water that has a known level of PFAS in it. I could go and start hunting around in my town, but I got wild cards of, is there enough volume there? And then, do I now need to do PFAS at that point? So, to me, my stronger option right now is looking at extending to Dunstable. So, that's where my plan was at that point. So, the next thing that happened was, we found out, and this, I found out in fall, I don't know how long it'd been kicking around in Grotton, but this is when I kind of got talked into being part of this. And so, where we were considering extending to Grotton, it just kind of made sense that, could there be some synergy here? Could there be some work commonality? My water supply, my water supply is very close to the high school right now. I actually treat the sewage from the high school. I get all that PFAS water from the toilets, and it comes to my treatment plant right now. And so, additionally, as has been stated, there's that yellow bar, that's essentially, there's a bunch of houses that are downgrading, the groundwater flows from west to east across there, and that area is now seeing impacts of this PFAS water. So, at the time, we talked about an extension looking like this, so we have, I'm going to point a little bit, so we have this section over here, which essentially takes care of the high school and the properties that are impacted, and then this line coming from the east with the D on it would essentially tie back in, and that would bring Dunstable water into the situation. So, Dunstable water, in the long term, would actually be feeding these houses and feeding the high school under this formula. So, we kind of ran with this process for a bit. There's a lot of analysis, a lot of cost estimating stuff going on with that. Go ahead. Then we got the EPA proposed limit. And again, my Nashua offline doesn't meet, Bemis meets both, and Jersey, I have this problem, I'm above the EPA limit, but I'm already in a process to do treatment there. So, I have that handled. So, I'm handling my PFAS issues. So, right now, based on all the conversations, I have, now looking back to what my original proposal is, is to connect through to Dunstable on 113, which doesn't serve the high school at this point, but that's the project that I am looking at right now. It's going to take a long time to do that. There's a long permitting process. I would believe that, as part of that process, there could be a reevaluation of how that pipe sits, where it goes, how it lays, but at this point, this is the project that I'm looking at. So, where I stand, my current status, I've applied for SRF funding for my water treatment plant and for that water main extension. I'm starting piloting probably next week at the Jersey Street Wells. We're going to be starting the preliminary design of that treatment plant so that I can be ready to get that built as soon as possible, and I'm going to start that permitting process, because it's a long, it's two to three years to do that water main extension process, to do that part. Less so for just providing water to the high school. But that, I just wanted to kind of make sure that there were no questions, because I'd seen a lot of different information that'd come out relative to this. Stuff about iron treatment at the Jersey Street Wells, which I'm not aware that I need to do. If someone has analyzed my results, I'd be happy to talk to them, but right now, I'm only looking at PFAS treatment. So, that's just where I'm at. I wanted to make sure that, what I understood was, whoops, what in front of you? And I have appropriated $23 million, $13 million for the water treatment plant, $10 million for the water main extension. That's based on the cost estimates that I put together for the projects that I have.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands, the extension and the interconnection to Dunstable is going to happen regardless of what happens at the Grotton High School, and the decision at the Grotton High School has no impact on the connection to Dunstable. Do I understand that answer?
So, I look at it as, from a permitting and a regulatory standpoint, they're going to look more beneficially at a connection that would take care of the high school at the same time. So, to me, there is a process, but long-term, I'm still looking at an extension. I just, again, I was thinking of solving more than one problem, you know? And that's why I offered. I mean, honestly, there wasn't a real big benefit to Pepple, other than this regulatory aspect that would be supported through a, you know, kind of a more regional approach to this.
Agreed, but I just wanted to clarify, regardless of what happens at the Grotton Dunstable High School, the interconnection with Dunstable is a separate crime.
Correct. Yes, yes.
And Paul, I thought you wanted to talk to Grotton Water, you tend to say you'd like to give people a view of what's going on at Grotton.
Sure, let us, we will. So, when Paul's finished, Jason will talk about, you know, the discussions that you guys may have, and so, and then after that, Peter Cunningham can pick it up and get the Grotton folks involved in it. Paul?
Any questions?
Excuse me, go ahead.
Paul, you're the chairman of Grotton Water Commission. Wanted to make a comment that there have been various discussions about whether iron or heat is treated in the Jersey well.
Right, I've only heard that from publications like yours.
You've heard that from me and a lot of engineers. We fully realize that you're in the obligation to treat iron by any special standard. I see you doing pilot work to see how the activated carbon will treat PFAS. Your well, your probably well has, was done to us dozens of years, that the efficiency of treatment can be effectively higher, or therefore, it would be a cost decision.
Yep.
Will it be better to have pre-treatment and say unfiltered, et cetera?
And that's what pilots do.
So, you agree with that?
Yeah.
That's an unknown, I agree at this point. Would it be beneficial for you to put a pre-treatment in or will anyway you can get PFAS out, so it might be more costly to put the iron in?
And that's part of the process.
So, that's part of the confusion, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Pepple? Paul, thank you. Do we? I'm sorry. Hang on one second, we'll take Matt in the back there.
Matt, I want to understand that when you're talking about the Grotton High School, you're also talking about the PFAS homes that are around it, correct?
Correct, correct. That plan, and a year ago, we were talking about phasing it, I mean, this whole thing's gone through a ton of iterations, but, you know, we could have gotten water to the high school probably by this year if we'd kind of accelerated things, and we've been just kind of working through all the different iterations at this point. Now, it's a pipe that does this big J, the auction to do from Pepple, and it would run by the Dunstable people and then into the high school.
So, if the Pepple auction to the Grotton Regional High School doesn't happen, the feeding of the home there would have to be a whole separate issue?
Well, that would, I'm saying, Grotton's plan has taken care of it, they can get their own heat from this long time.
As far as the cable goes, I guess if we're going to talk, we need to build the microphones so people watch it and hear it.
Ideally. And you had a question?
I actually have two.
Okay, go ahead. Please.
My name is Connie Sartini, and I'm the boarder for the Grotton Herald, and of course, this is a very interesting story for both towns. My question to you, sir, is firefighting. I'm planning on thinking about a fire hydrant that will have sufficient capacity to cover anything in the high school.
So, the pipe network that was being put in place was not necessarily going to provide fire flow for the high school. Underneath the plant, it's my understanding, they have their own fire hydrants. There's this sprinkler system in the high school, so that obviates the fire hydrant, but if fire hydrant does start, it would get started.
What is helpful?
I don't know what's nice, so, or even this, what the fire flow.
My second question is, if you had a treatment facility, and that would become part of the cost for the three towns, if there was a regional solution?
We hadn't worked out how the cost would be laid out.
And as part of that, on disposal, whatever is captured, you know, whether it's still available or not, is that a disposal of PFAS?
Currently, they even try to regenerate it, or they... Yes. That's my understanding. I don't need PFAS. That's my understanding.
Any other questions for Pepple before we move on? John?
Would you agree on behalf of Grotton, can it be a system?
Would you want to hear from your water?
Yeah, we'll finish our side, and then you guys can come in, Tom. All right, Allison. So, next, we're going to, Ron, hang on a second. Allison?
Yes, I'm just wondering, I know it wasn't part of this presentation, does Pepple have testing data for the different PFAS six elements kind of broken out through the testing time window, or is that not available at all?
Yes, when you do PFAS analysis, they add them up for you, but they show each of the individual fractions of each one.
Okay. So, it's available, but we don't have it currently?
Well, go on the DEP website, and you'll be, go there, yeah.
Okay. Next, we're going to ask Jason Silva, the Dunstable Town Administrator, to talk about the option that we are considering.
Okay, so, I'm not going to, I don't want to repeat what Paul just went over, and I don't have a fancy PowerPoint I gave at our last meeting, so I'll be somewhat brief. But over the last three or four months, I guess, the town administrators of Dunstable, Pepple, and the town manager of Grotton had four or five meetings to discuss, to initially discuss options, and ultimately came down with a recommendation. I think there was almost, we quickly came to consensus amongst the three of us that the solution that made the most sense, from an economic standpoint, from permitting schedule standpoint, and from an impact standpoint, was the Pepple-Dunstable-Grotton solution. And so, we have been working, kind of rolling in the same direction, so to speak, for, I don't know, like I said, three or four months, with the hope that that would be the ultimate end game, and we would be able to move forward and implement. Unfortunately, there was kind of a left turn in that process, and now we're here, we're here tonight, we probably would have been here at some point, anyway, talking about the issue. So, since our last meeting, since we met and I kind of went through things, there have been a couple things, at least, that have changed, that I just did, I wanted to go through. And I do want to say, the materials that the Town of Grotton had sent over in advance of these meetings, thank you, very comprehensive, helpful, appreciate the work you all put into that.
And there are copies of all of this background data here for anybody who would like that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that, because it was really helpful in helping kind of frame the issue in front of us. So, from a funding standpoint, we all know, the Pepple project's cheaper, and it's not, in my view, a small amount of money. It's about $4 million cheaper. So, and in addition to that, the initial estimate of the Grotton project was $4 million more than what it is now. And I'm not an engineer, so I don't, I'm still, I still have questions about the value engineering that was done between the 16.8 number and the 12.8 number-ish. And so, that's one question I do have, is what caused that dramatic decrease between the initial estimate that we received and the current estimate that we have? But even with the lower estimate, the costs of the projects are substantial, Pepple is less. I do want to say that the Town of Grotton has agreed to hold the Town of Dunstable essentially harmless financially, so that's an important piece to consider and think about. That's an additional, that's an additional $1 million of essentially ratepayer money in Grotton that they're contributing to lower the Town of Dunstable's cost. So, our cost for the Pepple project was about $1.9 million. Our cost for the Grotton project is about $2.9 million, with the school split of 77-23. Town of Grotton has agreed to contribute a million to keep us at $1.9 million contribution from the Town of Dunstable. That said, if there are price escalations, you know, there are questions on how the heck we're going to handle that, right? Especially given the discrepancy between the initial price, the initial cost and the valued engineered cost of 12.8. The state revolving fund application deadline has come and gone, it was the 11th of August, and the Town of Grotton has submitted an application on behalf of the Grotton-only project. The Dunstable project to connect to the high school has not been, did not, was not submitted to the program. So, what that's essentially done, and is explained in one of these documents, is it's basically equalized the schedule, I'd say. So, it's going to be roughly the same, because unless we can apply for emergency funding, which may be an option, unless we can go back and amend an application if a different decision is reached, it's basically the schedule, unless, without those two options, the schedule is the same, because we need to wait till next year, we would need to wait till next year to apply. Having said that, I think it is, it's an important consideration. If Pepple is the lead, Pepple is an environmental justice community. They are a tier-two environmental justice community, according to the DEP. So, what that means is that they have interest forgiveness on the loan, but they also potentially have principal forgiveness on the loan. And in the past, my understanding is that they've seen roughly a third, I think I've heard, about a 13% reduction in principal, which on, if you use it on the Pepple number of eight and a half, it's not a small number. It reduces it, it's over a million dollars, so it reduces it by that much. So, that's an important consideration. Even if it is a year, let's say it's a year, worst case, it still could reduce our cost by that much more than we already are seeing, than we already would see. In addition to that, I think last week or two weeks ago, DEP sent out an email for a grant program that exists for PFAS mitigation for small public water systems. Again, we may be eligible to get it regardless. With the Town of Pepple involved, it's the second item listed on the letter, or the fact sheet they have, if you're an environmental justice community, you get preferred ranking and consideration. And Grotton is not an environmental justice community, Dunstable is not an environmental justice community. So, those are things that I think we need to consider moving forward. There also are questions on permitting with the inter-basin transfer for Town Grotton. I know they are, they are working right now on the issue of lost... I know they are, they are working right now on the issue of Lost Lake, and I know they've been in contact with the Department of Conservation and Recreation on that, there is no guarantee that they're not going to have to, there's no guarantee they're gonna find, or get a determination of insignificance, which, if they aren't able to do that, will cause MEPA review, and will cause an additional year-ish to the process, so it's something to consider, I know that, I know that they're hoping to get that, and it's, it's definitely a possibility, I'm not saying it's not, but it is a question, it's not, it's not a definitive yes or no right now, based on the feedback that DCR has provided. Otherwise, local concom is really the, my understanding, is the permitting for the, the Pepperell project. So, you know, I mean, those are the major issues, I mean, for, I guess, the last thing, there are still, there are a lot of other questions, but I'm not gonna go through a laundry list of questions right now. But I guess for next steps, obvious, obviously, ideally consensus on some way to move forward, that would be wonderful. You know, we have talked about it the last meeting, just for the sake of the town of Groton folks, we had talked about the potential, or the possib, possibility of peer reviewing the cost estimate and permitting schedule on our side, just to, you know, get our eyes on it from a, from an expert, and, and then all these IMAs we're gonna have to negotiate, right? So from, are we going to come to agreement in a way that we're comfortable with sharing legal counsel, or are we gonna need separate legal counsel to negotiate an IMA for the cost share, and for the connection into Dunstable if the, if the Groton project is, is preferred and selected, so? That's my quick and brief summary on my thought, my updated thoughts on the two options.
Any questions from anybody in the audience? Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I think, just a brief overview, and I'll let other members of the board speak, and Tom, work it, I mean, we, certainly, I think the timeline is pretty consistent, always been laid out here, but what really changed, I think what was significant to our board is when we met on July 31st, we, you know, appreciated, we had the information prepared by the town administrator and our town manager, but there was additional information that we entertained, and our water department met with us and talked with us, and they talked with us about a, a rate structure that would actually bring some money to the table, and make the solution that you talked about, Jason, less, I guess, less difficult for, for the town of Dunstable. We also were concerned in looking at some of the issues that we had in Groton in terms of water supply, we also are now starting to get reports of some people in the proximity of the high school that are having PFAS contamination in their wells, or elevated levels, and having the ability to extend our water main from where it is now in the center of town, sort of at the, by our cemetery, the Hollis Street, Longley Road area, down to the high school down Jacoby Row, would allow us to connect more properties, would provide for, you know, additional tie-ins for people that had elevated, you know, levels of PFAS or contamination issues, as well as serving the high school. So that was something that was important, I think, to our board in concern in reviewing that, and it's just, I think, a brief overview. And Tom, you want to talk a little bit now?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
Well, we just did, yeah.
So I'm just gonna give you an overview of the Grotons' system. PFAS, the new regulations come January, will be four parts per trillion. I know we're talking about 15s and 20s and over 20s, 70s, but the new regulation will be four parts per trillion, that's a very hard number to obtain, and it's a single element of those six elements that they have. Groton is in the process of studying PFAS treatment at our new treatment plant, we're not anticipating designing or constructing anything, but we're in the conceptual design phase. Because we're building a treatment plant, we need to know if we need to put any infrastructure in, in the infield, around the paved areas, to be ready for it in the future, if we need it. Groton has always been under four parts per trillion, we've been in non-detect, two parts per trillion most of the time, one sample came up, six or seven parts per trillion, and we re-sampled it on our own, and it was back to non-detect. So this, your PFAS is everywhere, septic systems, whether it be firefighting foams or other construction items, you're gonna find it everywhere, as Paul had said, it's in the Nashua River, it's in private wells, it's in public wells. With respect to the Groton system, we suspect, because we're doing horizontal construction, a minimal request for the state to get water to the high school, hydrolically, we can meet the hydraulic demands with fire hydrants all the way out to the high school, there'll be no need to keep the cistern, that'll be backup, but we can provide fire protection along the entire route into Dunstable, and for all the homes in Groton, so, just to clarify, fire protection, because that's a big thing that the town of Groton and the fire chief has spoken with the town manager about. So that's a positive element for us. With regards to the money that the Water Commission has talked about ponying up to this project, $1 million, it's not from the ratepayers, it's not from our reserve fund, it's based on new revenue that we would get from selling water to the high school, new revenue, so there, it's not something that comes out of ratepayer money, so we need to be clear on that, that's new funds that come in from the sale of water, the extension over a 30-year period, pays the commitment that we'll make to the, the Board of Selectmen, how they want to spend it, that's up to them, but it looks like they want to try to keep Dunstable neutral in terms of a Groton proposal, which is more costly. We have the supply in-house, I know people talk about this inter-basin transfer, we're asking for an insignificant amount of water to provide water to the high school, and it's really water that leaves the basin via the sewer system at the high school, which is less than 50,000 gallons a day, so it's a very small number. We have a permit ability of up to 75,000 gallons a day, I believe, that would fall, so that's well under that threshold they've met, and so we're well on our way. We also are a small system, and we are, I've applied last week before I went on vacation for funding through this special fund that DEP has set aside for small communities and disadvantaged justice communities. So we're, we're in the queue with that as well, so we suspect we'll get some money. That money drives up in two years, so you have this year and next year to obtain those special funds that DEP has set aside, it's a competitive process, and hopefully, they don't give it all to the big communities, they spread it around, so everybody gets a piece of the pie. There is a lot of SRF funding out there, zero interest for everybody that's looking for PFAS treatment, or treat, PFAS mitigation, such as Groton's. You can get principal forgiveness, as Paul had said, we would be in the queue for that as well, we don't have any commitments until we apply, we're all applying for PFAS mitigation, PFAS treatment, all kinds of communities across the state, and I bet, next year it'll be even more, so the process will be even more competitive. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has about PFAS, funding, hydraulics.
Tom, can you talk a little bit, it was brought up previously, the, the reduction in cost, the value engineering impact, can you talk, speak to that a little bit, what changed?
Value engineering?
Uh, okay.
Yeah, the drop from the 16 to the 12.
Right, great. If you step up to the mic, please.
Drop from 16 to 12. So, so what we did, what we did is, as Mark had pointed out to myself and to the engineers, is to try and reduce or cut costs wherever we could. So we had the engineers go back and look at the hydraulics, and they reduced some of the pipe sizes from 12 to 8 in certain areas, that still got the water to the, the homes that we needed to get to in Dunstable and Groton, and still provided the fire protection, and that's how we reduced some of the costs, and we, we looked at some of the different routes we could take to possibly shorten some pipe lengths to get to the homes in Dunstable. That's how we, that's how we reduced the cost.
With the reduction, though, particularly of pipe size, which, I imagine capacity which you can supply, recognizing that potentially there could be additional homes in Dunstable if this plume is spreading, are we still be able to service those homes?
Yes. So, so we looked at pipes sizes to a certain point in the distribution system, and that it would neck off into smaller pipes that could go left or right, or up the street this way. So, hydraulically speaking, and capacity-wise, we can meet that by reducing some of the pipe sizes. For instance, the high school doesn't need a 12-inch pipe to the high school, they can get away with an 8-inch pipe.
Right.
So we reduce some of that, and that's a significant length of pipe from the street to the school itself.
Okay.
So that's how we, that's how we reduce costs.
The next house that comes up in Dunstable, are you gonna run more pipe? And then the next one, you're gonna keep doing again?
We're prepared, we can't play what ifs, we're prepared to do what we need to do in Groton if the issue of PFAS continues to spread to other homes. I mean, we can say, we can have what ifs all night long, what we have to realize is that we're trying to get treated water to the school and to the homes in Dunstable that meet the new standard as fast as we can. And the new standard is four parts per trillion, not the 20 parts per trillion that we're dealing with today, it's the new standard, and we can do that in 12 to 18 months. The permits are not that big of a deal, as soon as the SRF funding intended use plan comes out in January, and the final plan in April, we're gonna be ready to go, hitting the street July 1st. We've already been to town meeting, we have a commitment of 16 million, we're gonna reduce that amount in the fall to the 12.8 that we need for the project. So we're ready to go, once the state says you have the funds. I think Paul is gonna be the same position, as soon as he has the funds to go, he's gonna start building vertically.
Okay, all right, good. Still, you have a question, ma'am? Sorry, could you identify yourself, please, your name?
Yes.
And I actually step up to the mic, too, it's for the benefit of the people on the watching and cable.
Maria Amade, 52 Pleasant Street, Dunstable, Mass., also on the Board of Health. I just had a question, what hasn't come up, are one of the PFAS numbers for Dunstable Water?
They're under four as well.
Okay.
On a rolling year average, they're under four as well.
Okay, just checking.
I'll just, could I?
We still have...
Hang on one second. Are there any other questions for Tom?
Yeah.
John?
Well, the question was, Tom, that it's not a matter of what ifs, because the plume is going that way. So if, in your solution, if your pipe stops at whatever the last house is now, is, if, as the plume is going, goes farther, are you guys gonna construct more pipe versus the Dunstable-Pepperell solution comes right down the same road, and therefore it's not a matter of adding more pipe, it's just a matter of connecting those people?
The answer to that is yes, and I believe the plan that I saw for getting water from Dunstable to Pepperell is to go down 113 Lowell Road, the entire dis, the whole, entire route, so, if that's changed, but to answer your question, we're prepared to provide water if the, if the plume moves.
The original plan was to come down and around and up Groton Street, the 113 plan is only if it's not going to the high school.
Do you go down to Groton Street now?
No.
Okay.
So we stopped at 113, so that's where the D is here, we were saying before, this is where the plume is, and so that solution does this. So no matter what, anybody comes up here, they're already covered by the Pepperell solution versus the Groton solution, which you would have to keep adding customers, and to the same point as you wanted to service your two, two customers in Groton versus our 15 that have the plume, we feel the same way, is that Dunstable's, more of the customers and residents are in Dunstable than they are at Groton.
Yeah, I think, well, right, I mean, I think any solution, we want to make sure that the Dunstable homes are serviced, because that's, you know, that's, that's been one of the real, you know, bad things about this, is that people aren't able to use their water, and it's expensive in the school district, too.
Maria?
So we've heard from Pepperell, Groton, and Dunstable, and I'm just trying to put it all together in my head, so I haven't been here, but basically, we have a situation where we have PFAS in all three towns. All the towns want to expand their water, we don't know where the PFAS is gonna end, but we know other houses are gonna come up, in all three towns, with PFAS. So, there are some advantages to going with Pepperell, because they have some standing in their program, the environmental justice, I think it was, program, Groton has already filed some of the paperwork, so that might speed up their process, though ours may be shorter for other reasons. In a nutshell, all the towns want to expand their water lines, and I don't see a huge advantage to any of it, because I think in the end, 20 years from now, the Groton water line's gonna come up towards the high school, and the Dunstable water line's gonna come up towards the high school, and we're gonna be connected with Pepperell, because we're gonna need to do this, so what's the least expensive now, because I don't, it doesn't sound like there's a huge time difference in going, like Groton's not gonna get us there a year sooner. And we all, we're all looking at this as the water supplies, we're looking for water supplies that meet the criteria.
The cost is, at minimum, $4 million different between Pepperell and Groton, the Pepperell project is cheaper.
And, one more thing on that, which I mentioned before, is that we haven't had the same relook at the costs that they did when they went from 16 to 12, so ours, that option could potentially go down as well, because one of the, one of the line items, one of the line items on your difference was the actual billing rate, went down by $50 per hour, so no matter what, if you're gonna just, not counting anything else, billing rates alone.
I do think it's impractical, or not impractical, but if Dunstable's going to be expanding anyway with Pepperell, that the idea that we depend on Groton to slowly expand its system deeper and deeper into Dunstable to service the Dunstable houses, that just doesn't feel like a good what-if plan. I mean, Dunstable has water, has a system, the idea that we're just gonna sit and wait and say, oh, by the way, Groton, we've got a couple more houses, can you run the lines a little longer, and keep us in a long-term, deep relationship with the water department, when we do have capacity? Thank you.
It just, one, I would observe one thing, though, I don't think, we're not gonna have a lot of time to sit and wait at this, the DEP has been pretty insistent on a solution, and we'll very soon find ourselves, I think, under a consent decree, and if we're not able to do it collectively, it's towns, and we'll fall back onto the school district to do, and, and they have, you know, a lot of things on their plate that we need to worry about, and the least of which is probably dealing with the water system, and that'll just get passed on both towns as assessment.
So just that Dunstable will get shut down for a year or two because of some paperwork?
No, no, I think the DEP is gonna say, you need to solve this problem right away, and if the towns can't come to some consensus in how it gets solved, it sort of falls back onto the school district, which is a public water supply, which is why they're subject to that DEP regulation.
So Groton wants to do it, and you'll go along with the Dunstable-Pepperell option you're proposing?
No, I think, and again, part of the reason we're here tonight is to try to come to some, some reconciliation on that, and try to come to some, you know, agreement on what the best outcome is.
Hang on one second, Mark.
It's funny, we've got something, John, you say? In terms of the, the price estimates, when environmental partners went back and looked at the 12.8, they were also evaluating the run from the Jersey Street well to the high school and the surrounding progress in Dunstable at the same time, so they used the same logistic, the same logic in developing both estimates, so the 12.8 is, is with the 8.4, so the difference is $4 million, and if there're gonna be any efficiencies moving forward, both will either go up or down. Both were done at the same time, one wasn't done, and then another one was done with different logic, they were both done at the same time.
Corrective of our own, that's all. Thank you.
Hang on one second, Jason.
Thank you. I just wanted to make, I, one point that John just made, that I was, I appreciate that, because the apple, as long as it's apples to apples, I just wasn't, okay. The other thing is, I wasn't, I, you took my ratepayer money, I mean, it wasn't meant as a jab, it was just, I was just making the point that there was a contribution being made. I mean, you, the distinction, I appreciate, but it ultimately, I mean, if the money was coming in, it'd be offsetting the rates of the ratepayers, what, so, ultimately, it is impacting your ratepayers, I didn't mean it by that, but, I didn't mean it that way, by the way, but it, ultimately, that's, if the money, if a million dollars is coming into the enterprise fund, it's offsetting increases, that now your ratepayers are gonna see.
But if that ratepayer's the high school...
Okay, so that's, I'm not looking to fight about it, but that is the truth.
And if that ratepayer's the high school, which you said it was, aren't we paying 23% of that? Or is that million not counting our 23%?
It is not 23%.
So... So we're not really getting a million, we're getting a million minus 23%?
The logic on that million dollars is that the money's coming both from the Dunstable ratepayers as well as students at the Dunstable Regional High School, right? So Dunstable is contributing 23%. But a portion of that million dollars is also coming from the town of Groton. The Groton Select Board has decided and has voted to make Dunstable whole on the Groton solution, taking that million dollars of new revenue, which is coming both from Groton residents and Dunstable residents, and using it to keep Dunstable whole. So that's the point that I think everybody needs to understand.
That's appreciated. Mar.
Ron, one of my members has a question.
Mar.
Hang on one second. Go ahead, Becky.
I was gonna address that, but I actually had something else I would like to say. I think it's important for everyone to know. I voted originally, the first time that our board voted, I voted for the Pepple solution based primarily on the fact that it was cheaper. In the intervening months since that vote, I have learned a lot. I appreciate that a lot of information has been provided from Groton Water Department and from other sources. I read the entire Environmental Partners report. And for people in the room who may not know, Environmental Partners was hired early on as a consultant to evaluate all of the options as we were going along. I have changed my position to believe that the Groton solution, although it is more expensive, is the best choice, and I believe it's the best choice for both towns. And the main reason, and this is something that hasn't been mentioned earlier this evening, this is a school district problem. And Groton and Dunstable have an almost 50-year relationship, working together to solve all of these issues at the school district. I think it is preferable to keep the solution to this problem between our two towns because we're embarking on a 30-year relationship with a water company. If there are three towns involved, it gets more complicated anytime anything comes up. I think we are better off in a two-person relationship the way we have been for almost 50 years with the school district. And I, I really mean no disrespect to Pepple when I say that. I think it is inherently better for all of us to be in a two-person relation, a two-party relationship, than a three-party relationship. We don't have to look too far to see that the North Middlesex School District, which is three different towns, they went through a period of suing each other, two versus one, one versus the other two, different, different coalitions. And I'm not saying that anybody in this room would want that to happen, but if there are three parties, it can happen. If there are two parties, we have always managed to solve our differences together. So that's why I think we, the Groton solution is, is better. Dunstable will have a two-party relationship with Pepple over the extension of their water. Groton will continue to have a two-party relationship with Pepple over our sewer. I think those have worked, and it has worked in Groton. I think that two-party agreements are better for both of us.
Maria, one second, Bud.
Last, last time that Mark and I were here, we talked about the, the intangibles which, which Becky sort of brought up, but also the fact that John, John O'Rourke did not agree with him. He said the, the main thing we should think about is in fact...
Bud, can you introduce yourself? I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself for the viewers at home?
Bud?
Can you just introduce yourself for the viewers at home?
Oh, Bud Robertson, I'm a, I'm a finance committee in Groton. So back when I was thinking about this, I mean, I wanna talk about two things. One is that $4 million we talk about costing more, it doesn't cost Dunstable anymore. And if you remember last time we were here, I mentioned that the Groton Select Board had, was going forward to propose that the Groton taxpayers pay $25 more a year on the tax bill for the increased cost between the Groton and Pepple solution. And the money that in fact was gonna come through the fees, the, the water would in fact pay for the Dunstable, so they would pay no more. So in fact, the $4 million, although it's an increase, there's no impact at Dunstable, and Groton has said that they'd be willing to pay $25 more a year to do what Becky said, to have a two-person group versus a three-person group. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I want to talk about was the fact that today, although they could change, today the rates in Groton are less expensive than the rates in Pepple. Therefore, Groton residents and Pepple residents who tie in the PFAS, because you gave me the Dunstable, I'm just, the Dunstable residents would pay less, about 8%. Pepple is 8% more expensive today than the Groton ratepayers pay on an average house. So that doesn't mean it's not gonna change in the future, but today, those are the numbers, and they could change in the future. But right now, Pepple is more expensive than the Groton solution for the average residents in Dunstable and Groton. The second thing is, the school will pay more, a lot more, because of the rate structure for the Pepple water than it will for the Groton water. So the second thing is, the Groton solution is less expensive for the school, and therefore the taxpayers in Groton and Dunstable will pay less because obviously the Groton water is less. And the third thing that I want to mention is the fact that if Groton runs the water line and controls the water, to me, there's less, there's more pressure on Groton to keep the cost down. First of all, if this, if the costs go up over time, and 30 years is a long time, if the costs go up over time, we're gonna see that Groton taxpayers will pay more because that's 77% of the number. Dunstable will pay more as well. But the Groton taxpayers will pay more, and the Groton Water Department is in fact run by the Groton Water Commissioners who are elected by the Groton taxpayers. So there's much less, there's gonna be more pressure to keep the cost down. Pepple rates, if they go up over time, Groton and Dunstable will pay more money, but Pepple, in fact, will get all the money. It's, there's no, it just goes directly back to Pepple. There's no money going to Groton, and no money going to Dunstable, and in fact, influence trying to keep the cost down. So from my point of view, today's lower cost for Groton is in fact a better deal for the taxpayers today in Groton and Dunstable, I should say, yeah, for the school, and in fact, better for the residents. And going forward, by us being in control, there's more pressure to keep the cost down. And in fact, it's just us. And we, we run the system, and the taxpayers ultimately run the commissioners who run the schools. So overall, I think it's a better system today, a better, a better deal today because of the cost. And Groton's gonna pay for the additional cost for the, I call it, intangibles that the Groton, the Dunstable Water Commission did not agree with. But I still believe they're all real things, and we will take care of the PFAS. So those are the reasons I think the Groton solution is in fact a better solution.
Alright, so on that, you're talking just the Pepple water rates. Well, being that the Pepple-Dunstable solution incorporates Dunstable water as well, so we can't just go by what Pepple's rates are because we will control water as well because it'd be coming from the Dunstable solutions once we get up to 113. So that's, that's, I think going with the rates on Pepple versus you is not necessarily a valid argument because, again, much of that water can be coming from Dunstable when we have the full connection.
Yeah, what I said was, based on the rates today,
Okay.
it's less expensive, and I don't know what's gonna, future's gonna bring.
Right, but you didn't account for any of the water being Dunstable water. You're counting just Pepple's water. And you're saying Pepple, right, well, Dunstable water has, is going to be part of that. And so we control...
And they're less expensive.
We have an elected commission as well that can control our rates as well.
And they're, it's less expensive than Groton today?
Not right now, but that's the point. When we have a different connection with more water, it, that, that changes things. More rates, more ratepayers, same thing as what you're saying. So, and, and if you wanna say the control thing, it's the same thing with Dunstable.
Well, Pepple's also in your, in your loop.
And in what loop?
Well, I mean, it's not charging rates, I assume, for the school. It's gonna be not yours, I thought the water was coming from Pepple, no?
Only when it first starts, but once we have that, that's the whole point of having the loop. Is so that Dunstable and Pepple. And if you want to go into intangibles, then we'll talk about that, the fact that connection to Pepple and Dunstable also helps all of Pepple's users based on having emergency water supply or even just supplying them with water.
I understand that, we're talking about...
Well, you wanted to bring up intangibles, so that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I did.
So then the other intangibles...
And last, last, last week, you threw them all up the window because you said, let's talk about real facts.
Yes, we saw what I'm saying, you brought them back in. You brought them back in, so the Dunstable thing...
Yeah, let's move on.
I'm just trying to figure, figure, I'm, well, I'm finishing with the regional solution. The regional solution also helps Dunstable in emergency situations. When we have water issues, we can also get that from Pepple, too. So it's not just a Groton thing or just a Dunstable thing. It actually helps all three towns versus yours does your town.
Groton-Dunstable might...
It's really just your town. No, that's not true, it's Groton-Dunstable.
One thing I wanted to clarify, something John just said, that he's not taking into consideration with the cost. If Pepple is gonna spend $10 million to do the connection, Pepple's gonna have to pay debt service on $10 million over 30 years. Regardless of what the rates that Dunstable provides to Pepple for that money, Pepple still has to pass that cost on to their ratepayers. So unless you can sit here right now and say that you are gonna lower your rates to Pepple to offset the increase of the $10 million that they're gonna have to pay, you don't know if it's gonna be cheaper. You need to understand that $10 million's gonna have to be paid for somehow, correct?
Right, but they've already accounted for that in their, they've already had that approved through their...
They, they've approved it, they haven't borrowed it yet, and they don't know what the impact on the rates is gonna be yet.
Then we can say that about everything.
Absolutely, but I just want to point that out.
I never said anything was definitive, I'm just saying you said that that's the way it is right now. Three years from now or two years from now, that's not relevant.
Hang on one second, Maria, you got me going after that?
I'd like to address the concern about a three-way relationship. I could just, the analogy of school, the regional school system. The school, the department meetings, the regional school system, everything about the school is the most contentious and expensive department in town government. I'm on the Board of Health, I built the mess thing. It, it's just out of control, anything that comes up with the schools. I just don't think the analogy, the three-way school system, has anything to do with utilities. It's very common for multiple towns to get together for various utilities, particularly small towns and the way we all share and work and stuff like that. So I think the, the fear that a three-way relationship will run out of control and we will fight over, for the diversity officers just doesn't fit into the context of this conversation.
Yeah, I'm not sure, do you want to speak to that, I mean, I, I'm sure that's what the point you're making. Just in general, less complicated when you have two parties working on something.
Yeah, it's inherent in the matter that there are three parties versus two.
Right.
Yeah, not just in the relationship.
Yeah.
Michelle has...
This, um, just, Michelle, I, I don't wanna put these superintendent on the spot, but I don't know if she has any thoughts she wants to share about this because at the end of the day, this is her problem and the, let us, let us the DEP have her name on it. So I think we need, I think we need to hear how much she wants to be involved in this.
The, the reports of my death are greatly exaggerated to those people in the public. I did not resign today. I announced that in July, I'm gonna be retiring. Okay, so that's a long time from now. So anyway, just to clear that, because there's people in the fire department that are telling people across Groton that I actually resigned today, and that didn't happen. Just to make that clear. So while the school district does not really wanna weigh in on what solution, because the towns have to make the decision, right? And we have no expertise. This is totally out of our area of expertise. What I can echo is what I hear Peter saying, is that the DEP is getting frustrated, and the abutters are getting frustrated, so much so that some of them have already requested and have, we have installed Poet Systems for them, which are just single-home filtration systems. So the, I, I hear that there's this question A and this question B. It has to be A or B. There's no, I'm not gonna do anything. And the thing that would say to me is that when we talk about things about the water, I just wanna weigh in on one thing, whenever we get water in our operational budget, we're passing that, that cost back on to the town. Right, so if, if, I mean, I, I don't really wanna take a position here, but if Dunstable gets made whole by that million dollars, but then they have to pay part of the water bill as well as you have to pay half of the water bill, I'm not sure that that's, that was taken into consideration in, in the concept of made whole. But the, the bottom line here is that, that as situation, we can't argue about this forever because the DEP is breathing down my neck and says, where is your solution? And the abutters are also getting frustrated, and they're saying, where is the solution? And it's already costing us about $150,000 a year, which the two towns are gonna pay for. So the longer we wait, the more we have, can come to agreement, the more money it's gonna cost you in the end. That's, that's, that's all I can say about the solution. We just need to have a solution.
We have one Board of Health members here.
Okay. Alan, just give us one minute.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Colette of the Groton Board of Health. And one of the things that hasn't been discussed tonight is future water quality. The town of Groton is very, very fortunate because our forefathers and mothers were very, very diligent about protecting open space, protecting conservation land. Both of our wells are, have watersheds that are primarily conservation land. Whitney Pond is surrounded by open space, and Batacuk Pond is as well. There are low-density residential developments in the watershed. But over the years, Groton has been diligent with regulations and Water Resource Protection District bylaws, Board of Health regulations, Conservation Commission regulations. And I'm not saying that Pepple and Dunstable have not been, but it's, it is something worth considering in terms of water supply protection because protecting the watershed is what protects your drinking water. And thank you. And this is a difficult deliberation, and I appreciate all the effort that everybody has been putting into this.
Alan Chaney?
Yeah, Alan Chaney, Dunstable Conservation Commission. Two things, and it relates, one of them relates to the person that just spoke. One, this plume, well, it's not gonna stop. Do we know where it's headed? Is it headed for Ankety Brook? Is it, okay. Then Ankety Brook, and then into the Nash one. Okay. Dunstable's well field is on Salmon Brook, which runs into the Merrimack. The town of Dunstable has about 600 acres of conservation land in that area right now. So Dunstable's been pretty active in protecting its watershed as well. Matter of fact, we're picking up another five acres shortly. I think Groton has done a great job with open space. I think Dunstable's done pretty well as well. But I think we have to think about, okay, where's that plume headed? Is it going to slow down because we dig up soil and so forth? We're not gonna cap it with clay, obviously, the way you do with the Superfund site, Charles George. So what's, what's the expectation down the road as to future contamination? And have we looked at a map to see how many houses lie between the ones that are now corrupted and Ankety Brook? And have we looked at potential subdivisions? We know one's coming in over right near Ankety Brook, and Dunstable on River Street. It seems to me we ought to be looking at that. And that brings up in mind that the approach from Dunstable would take into account a lot of that area. When Groton says they'll extend it as much as need be, is that as effective or smart? I don't know.
Brian?
Brian LeBlanc, I'm a member of the Groton-Dunstable Regional School Committee. One point I did wanna bring up here is that, I think maybe it's not being considered, is that as... is that as of, um, today, the DEP has determined that, um, the Groton-Dunstable Regional School District is responsible for the source of the contamination and therefore is responsible for mediating the PFAS for the 15 affected homes in Dunstable. So in the future, if the plume moves and more homes are affected, the district is going to continue, I believe, to be responsible for those costs. And that means Groton is 77% responsible for those costs. So it's not like Groton gets to wash its hands in this issue now and future costs are going to be borne by Dunstable. It's going to be Groton that is going to be bearing 77% of the future costs if there's a Groton-only solution. So they definitely still have a future vested interest in this. It's not like they're going to walk away from this and it becomes exclusively a Dunstable problem if the plume moves.
That's true for either solution. Groton and Dunstable will be on the hook for any homes that are, are contaminated in the future from this.
But however, the Pepperell-Dunstable solution already comes down the road, would be coming down the road that's going to have the contamination, the Groton solution is not. You'd have to keep extending to follow those road.
Well, it's coming down Kemp Street, which you, and you'd have to extend it down, too.
Well, it's, it's coming, it's mostly, that's why there's 15 over here.
Well, there's Kemp Street down, down, essentially to Groton Street, too.
Yeah. So it's going Dunstable direction, up the same direction as that line would go. Mrs. Simmons.
So, the, uh, the, okay, now I lost my train of... It'll come in here. Um, the Groton rate payers will not be paying any of the, uh, $1 million. That money will all come from the taxpayers. The, the increase in the water that's being sold to the school district will pay that. Is that right? Okay, so, now, if that's in the, the Groton solution, in the, the other solutions, if the water comes from Dunstable or from, you know, Groton-Dunstable, Pepperell, who makes, uh, makes all that debt? Who, who gets all that money?
Pepperell.
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 Pepperell, e- even with water coming from Dunstable?
No. No, Dunstable will get it.
Dunstable would get it.
Dunstable will get, it's rate payers. Once it's connected to our line, that last part that comes up to the, the Dunstable, they become our rate payers.
It burns off. I mean, some of that could just be coming from Pepperell, and then also the, the cost of the, of the treatment plan in Pepperell, too, will get passed along to the rate payers.
Is that true? Without you passing that on?
I, I, not the financial...
Yeah, one has nothing to do with the other. Right.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not going to be free, I don't think.
Well, can I just ask a question because my understanding is that the Pepperell solution, the water is coming from the Jersey and Bemis wells. It's not coming from Dunstable.
Initial.
In the beginning, until it gets to the, this here, then it can come from either side. That's the point of it being...
This is, that's why we're, we've talked about this as a two-phase project. Let's deal with the immediate issue, which would be this first phase, and then look at the larger phase between Pepperell and, Pepperell and Dunstable.
So that means the cost changes because now the cost is 18.5 million for the Pepperell solution versus 12 million for the Groton solution.
But they already have it.
But, but, but it's still going to be, it's still going to cost the towns that are participating in that and the rate payers, the debt service on that. Correct me if I'm wrong. How else are you going to pay that money back?
Right, but if, if I'm getting additional water supply with my investment, then that's my gain, that's my cost. It's not that eight millions to mitigate the debt.
Okay.
The additional money is, is, for me to invest in order to maintain my supply.
That your rate payers will reimburse you, which the Groton-Dunstable Reader High School will be one of those rates.
It depends on the structure of the rates.
Yeah. John Morley. Sorry, John, as John was just...
I just get, for me, I, the way, and I got to clarify a couple of things. I heard at some of the Dunstable meetings that we changed our vote several times. We voted once. Her, her, you made, you made a motion that was seconded and no one, we voted against it.
We had voted previously, a couple, three months or weeks before that, to tell Mark to continue working on the Pepperell solution and the Groton solution. And then, that was before the July 31st. So that, I think that's the second vote.
Right, but we never, we never picked a solution until the 31st.
The 31st.
We voted once, and then they did, a couple of members did bring it back, and we never entertained that. So we voted once. I heard we voted five, six times. We voted once. And for me, I, I, and I see it even here tonight, I think they're, you're losing what we're talking about, the school. I hear you, you need to fix your issue, your, Mr. O'Brien, I even asked you at our select board meeting, I said, "If the price, the, the cost were the same for Dunstable, uh, with the Groton solution, were there any advantages to Dunstable?" You said, "No." And I heard a whole ton of advantages at one of your meetings, and I'm hearing them again tonight. So there's a whole ton of advantages to Dunstable by going with the Pepperell solution. I see that. But I don't think it's, it's helping the school. We've been tasked to fix the problem at the school and those houses that are contaminated. I, I really, and, and I, after our vote, I got a lot of calls from Groton residents that's, that weren't afraid of paying that extra money. They said, "Because of the fire suppression, where we know that when Pepperell's there, we're still going to need those cisterns that are..."
No, so, so there were a huge number of assumptions that have been made all throughout this process.
Right.
And I not, I did not, any of, I commented on certain things, but whether or not it had fire suppression is not as EPG determined, what the size and height was, if a water get there or not, whatever. So I would believe that, that it was an equivalency, okay? If it's not equivalency, fine, I just...
Well, I don't...
It really bothers me that people keep saying, "Well, there's fire suppression." Well, that school needs to have sprinklers in order to be properly fire suppressed.
Correct.
One hydrant is not going to put out fire at that school. So, you know, it, it, we're hearing quicker things all the time, but it just is troublesome.
Well, yeah, I agree. I've been watching some of the meetings and, and I see a lot of misconceptions. But I guess for me, when I voted the one time for the Crowd solution, it was after I heard from our Board of Health that said they would not entertain anything under four pots per trillion, when I heard from our Water Commissioner that said they would not entertain any solution that was under four pots per trillion, when I heard from our Water Superintendent who said he wouldn't support the regional solution because of the pots per trillion, when I heard from our Finance Committee Chair who said, "Because of the minimal difference in the cost, $25 a year, he would support the Groton solution." And then the engineers themselves that we hired to the tune of 200, 200, 200 to 300,000 that Groton taxpayers spent for the benefit of both Groton and Dunstable, never mind the million that we've agreed to give at, and I get calls all the time, you're laughing, but I get calls from our, our residents that say, "Why are we carrying Dunstable again? Why are we sending..."
Because you didn't even really do us, ask us. You just did it yourself. How do you expect Dunstable going to pay for it when you just said, "Okay, well, let's hire the engineer"?
Well, I'll ask it tonight.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's versus ask, what should I get? That's not what I...
It's not wasted money, engineering.
No, not at all. But that's why I voted the one time for the Groton solution, and, uh, that's all I have at this point.
Jason.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify what I presented at the last select board meeting. It wasn't just one vote, to be clear. And when you're going through a process, working with a group of people, when you think you're on the same page and you're moving in the, in the same direction, and then we're told after the fact that a vote has been taken by a board without even communicating with us, that is very disruptive to the decision-making process, okay? So, and, and these are straight from your meeting minutes. So if you want to go back and look at them, they're posted right on your website. April 3rd, you voted to endorse proceeding with the Dunstable-Pepperell-Groton solution on April 3rd.
There was an addition, I'm sorry.
No, that's not true.
Yeah, go look at the minutes.
I believe I made that motion, and I believe that it was amended to say, "And to keep the Groton..."
That's another one. That's another one. So on April 24th, on April 24th, the Select Board reconsidered the decision made on April 3rd and voted to pursue the Groton-only plan.
I don't think that's true.
On, uh, let's see. On June 26th, I just don't want to miss one. June 26th, the Board voted to authorize the Town Manager to pursue Option 1, which was the regional project while continuing, no, I don't, I don't know. But while continuing, continuing to explore Option 4. On the 31st, the Town Manager recommended the regional solution, and the Board voted against that. I'm just saying, there have been more than one vote on this project by your Board, and we, working outside of the select board process and meetings, when we're going through our due diligence and we're communicating with those stakeholders, and we find out after the fact that a vote has been taken by your Board without communicating that or without even asking, "Hey, we have some questions now. We just found out that your water does have PFAS levels, and we, we didn't know that. What, what's going on with that?" That never happened. There was never any of that communication. It was just, we voted against it because we just found out you have three-point-something PFAS levels in your water and we can't have, we need zero PFAS. Now, that's not how I, look, has it been perfect on both sides? Absolutely not. I'm not saying we've been perfect on this, I'm not. Don't take this the wrong way. But let's, let's be honest about the process. There have been more than one vote. That's what I presented at our last meeting. In fact, there have been four votes and five changes in, changes in direction. So that was my point at, at our last meeting.
But I think, you know what, that speaks to Jason, looking at it. I mean, this is, this is an evolving issue. There are many different elements to it. It changes, it's been changing from week to week. There's new information that comes in. People work with it at the staff level. We appreciate the work that you and, and Mark and, and Andrew and Pepperell put into this in bringing stuff to the Board. But then in our meetings, we hear, you know, there's additional information we get, and we also, you know, there's a political aspect, I think, to making decisions like that. And that's not a dirty word. I mean, that is our role as, as select board members, to listen to what our residents have to say, to hear from other people that are, that are stakeholders also, and bringing that to the table and making, making decisions. The reason tonight, and this is still evolving. I mean, we're here tonight to try to get to some solution and hopefully get to a point where we can enter into that interminable agreement because the consequences for not doing that are, are going to be very expensive and painful for both communities.
I wouldn't have even brought, I had to address it because I, I knew what he was referring to, and I wanted to clarify what I presented at our last meeting.
That's, that's fair. Understood.
Peter, Allison. Here. Hold on a second. Mr. Tully.
I just wanted to make a comment. We got Paul sitting in the back there. We have a long-term issue. The high school's one issue. We have a plume moving through the town. Paul's town is offering us a ton of money to get ahead of this issue, and that's going to benefit Groton as well. Because that line going through there already means that as it moves, we don't have to sit down and have these meetings again to dig up the street, to enter into any more agreements, to continue this pipeline. It's there. We have to worry about connecting the houses at that point. We all know the school needs to be fixed. We all want to fix that. We don't want the kids going to school with bad water and trucking and bottled water.
Yeah.
So that's what my feelings are. He's sitting back there offering a ton of money to help us all out, to help his town out, and that's three towns helped in one swoop.
One of my board members has something. Allison?
Yeah, so, so I think that Jason has brought up a really good point. I think we kind of have two different issues that, that are very closely connected but that are slightly different. One is kind of the, the engineering, technical approach, and the other one is the process. And I think everyone, you know, I agree that we all could have done different things in retrospect that would have made this process more collaborative. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I, I think that there are always difficulties when there are kind of two, two-plus entities having conversations, and in this case, there were some staff conversations, there were board conversations. You know, I, I don't know, kind of what, you know, we, we come down to the difference between inferring and implying, and, and, you know, there are so many nuances. But I think that there's some real benefit in terms of relationship, whether it's relating to this or other issues, to saying that we could have handled this better or differently months ago. Um, you know, and that I, I think at the time, our thinking, or my thinking anyway, was that DEP had made us aware of, of issues. The district didn't have the ability to step up financially, to look at concepts or solutions. Groton, at the time, was, was willing, and we still are, to do so. Dunstable was in a tremendous state of flux in that you guys were looking for a permanent administrator, so there wasn't, you know, kind of the same bandwidth in terms of taking on some of this sort of behind-the-scenes legwork. Um, you know, I think ultimately at this point, you know, there's, there's a lot of, I don't want to say hurt feelings, I mean, there's information that, that I feel like we're hearing for the first time, and it shouldn't be for the first time. Maybe I wasn't listening, I, I don't know. Um, you know, and, and as, as much as we can somehow work together to try and set aside the process and those hurt feelings and try and figure out the solution moving forward. I, for one, at, at this point, still have significant concerns about connecting to Pepperell just because they're, my understanding at this point is that their various testing data doesn't mean the future EPA regulations that I think we're heading for. So I'm still, have a big issue with that. I don't have a good understanding of what the, the benefits are to Dunstable, to this interconnection with Pepperell, whether this is reliance upon Groton participation or not. I don't understand, looking at the map, you know, and, and I am an engineer, looking at the map and there's a discussion of a loop, I still just see a line. So I, I, there's no question, there's still information that I don't feel like I understand. I don't know how we kind of can move away from the process and wishing we had done things differently in retrospect, kind of across the Board, to, to having a conversation about how we move forward. I don't think either Board should or is going to say, "Oh, you're right, we agree. We're going to go..." I mean, there's still a lot of conversation to be had. Um, and I just don't know how we can do that effectively without dealing with the process.
May I add my, um, my regret that things played out the way they did? I think I was shocked at our Board's vote on the 31st, uh, and I think, my assumption is that you, our Board, like I assumed, that since we had sort of delegated our administrators and our water people to, to work this out, that we would then go along with their recommendation. Um, and we didn't, and I think that's what has promoted, uh, this unfortunate situation. I would, at this point, having heard a whole lot of opinion and, and sort of analysis, and I, I would say very thoughtful comments about how we might move forward, um, I would be interested to hear from some of the Dunstable members at this point.
Hang on one second. Maria.
Maria Omeney again. Um, Dunstable 50-plus and Dunstable, there's been an awful lot of talk about it's important and we have to hurry and all that, and that's all really nice, we've probably spent half of our time, and we all agree. It has to be fixed. The EPA needs it, has to be fixed, so let's not even talk about that. Given the existing deadlines, everybody wants to do this. So it really comes down to, what I've heard a little bit at the end is, Groton wants nothing doing with water above what's your level. Because that's the thing we're hearing, is we don't think Dunstable water is pure enough. Not in those words, but that, not in those words, but ours is... Not in those words, but that, not in those words, but ours is all surrounded by conservation labels. Those are ours. You know, we have good water, we're well within the requirements. Is there a number? Because the rest of it feels like a smokescreen or there's another issue entirely. Because we have a solution and, and as far as the, this, this, this determination that it's a Pepperell system, I've only been peripherally involved with this, but I've seen the documentation that's gone to the meetings. It's been very clear that this has been, then Dunstable and Pepperell coming together. We're going to start using the Dunstable wells. If, if that wasn't heard, it wasn't listened. So, but what I really want to know is, does Groton have a hard line? We think our water is better, we want our water. And what's the number you want?
Yeah, I, I don't, I honestly don't think that's productive in any of this conversation to start getting hung up on numbers like that. I mean, it's something you need to pay attention to. It's a number that needs to be addressed. At the end of the day, when DEP or when the EPA should say, comes up with the new standards, there's going to be a number that water systems have to meet. Not just here, but everywhere. They're going to have to meet that.
So you're just looking at whether it's lower, it's better, we should go that way.
I can, you know, we, we could test-
There are a lot of things along that line.
We could test, we could test tomorrow, next week, and we could have elevated numbers. This PFAS issue is something that's cropping up. It's emerging everywhere. So, getting, getting hung up on whether Dunstable's three, we're two, Pepperell's, you know, 10.
I'm only thinking about it because the three of you guys have specifically mentioned the relative quality of Groton.
So for me, there, there hasn't been any discussion or, or data or information that I'm, I've been privy to that-
She hasn't kind of talked-
I haven't finished speaking.
No.
That, that speaks to, again, some sort of mixing of Pepperell and Dunstable water that would come somehow to the high school and the surroundings. I, I've heard that we would, that the high school and those surroundings would be Pepperell water customers. I've seen a line that, that appears to me to come from Pepperell by the high school and goes to Dunstable. I have no information or knowledge that there would be some big mixing and we would, I, I don't, I mean, again, as an engineer, I don't understand. The water can't flow both ways in the same pipe. All the water from Pepperell and Dunstable isn't going to flow to the high school and get mixed. I don't, so, yeah, I think in terms of authorizing, in my mind, the only PFAS numbers I've been able to focus on have been those of Pepperell. Because I have no information or understanding of how the Dunstable and Pepperell systems are going to function together to, to get water to the high school.
So you are very concerned about the PFAS numbers even at the local scale?
Yes, because the standard within the near future is going to drop down to four parts per trillion per PFAS chemical. And we have no information as to what Pepperell's numbers are for individual PFAS chemicals. I just looked at the DEP website. There's 2,249 Pepperell PFAS data points. So obviously, there's tons of information there to be gone through. But until there, for me personally, until there's an understanding of whether that 15 parts per trillion is two chemicals each at seven parts per trillion or five chemicals each at three parts per, I mean, they're, they're very different treatment requirements, thresholds, and end games. And until I have some understanding of that, I can't say, sure, let's connect with Pepperell. There may not be a problem, but until I understand that there's not, I have to assume there is.
Can you hear the major point in this documentation exactly how that water will be moved? Where is the end of the piece reaching the end of the four parts?
Potentially. I mean, it, it, and shame on me because it has not entered my, my thinking, my analysis that somehow Pepperell and Dunstable's water is going to be mixed together and then come to the high school of this area.
That was never presented to us. What was presented to us was that the water was going to come from the Jersey and Bemis wells in Pepperell.
On the way to Dunstable. No, permanently. We've not heard this initially.
And Dunstable was going to connect with Pepperell separately, but that did not affect what was going to be the water that was brought to the high school and to the Dunstable homes with contaminated wells. So, I mean, that, that's a very different picture, but we didn't ever consider that. That wasn't the option. We were considering two options. One was all from Groton. One was from Jersey Street and Bemis Street wells in Pepperell.
So your concern is the quality of the Pepperell water?
My personal concern with Pepperell is, my personal concern with Pepperell, with the Pepperell solution is that I, my fear is that there are more capital improvements in the future that will be required in Pepperell than there are in Groton. That is a guess. That's, no one can predict the future. But my reading of all of the information I have seen is that it is more likely that there will be higher capital costs in Pepperell and that we, as ratepayers, will have to pay whatever way they determine they're going to recoup their capital costs without having any vote in the matter. And that is why I prefer to deal with Groton.
Matt Pizzani, Board Member.
Yeah, clearly, as we said, there, there was, there was a problem with the process in which we rolled this out. But now I'm finding out this loop now. It's the first time we've heard about it, obviously. So, you know, a little on both sides here. Thing is, we're, we're talking about the high school and the affected areas. Nothing else. No loops, no anything else. We know the plume is moving. Right now, it's moving toward Dunstable. Who knows if it's moving toward Groton? We've already had a couple of houses show up. What happens if it starts coming, if it starts going down Chickapiro to our area? What are we going to do there? Maria said it already. She said they are, Groton's going to have to put that line in anyway. She said that. So, so the bottom line is, you know, in order to correct the issue at the high school, the Groton solution addresses that. The engineers had, have said that the Pepperell solution does not have the water pressure to handle fire suppression at the high school. So we would still have to maintain and upgrade the cisterns over the course of their life, which is an expensive cost. This is not for hydrants. There's enough water from Groton to handle the sprinkler systems at the high school. There would be fire hydrants at the high school. So fire suppression would be handled. The situation at the high school would be handled. And wherever that million dollars comes from, it helps offset the cost that Dunstable would have to pay. Understand, we're paying 77% of this. And some of the solutions give our taxpayers nothing. We need to figure out a solution that benefits everybody.
Okay, Brian, Peter, before you go on, I, I want to address this whole Dunstable water and hearing about it for the first time. It needs to be addressed. So may I please address that?
Yes.
The original solution that we talked about back in April was an interconnection with Dunstable to bring the Dunstable water through Pepperell to the high school. When we found out that the, that the Dunstable rates were, that Dunstable levels were higher, the Select Board backed off of that. And then we had to get back to ground zero, start all over again. I approached the Dunstable Town Administrator and the Pepperell Town Administrator and said, listen, I don't want to get involved in the interconnection with Dunstable. If that's something that you guys need to do down the line, I don't want Dunstable tax, uh, Groton taxpayers to have to participate in that $10 million cost. And whether it's coming from Pepperell or whatever, I want to fix the problem at the high school. And I said to Jason and I said to Andrew, let's focus on getting water to the high school. You guys are going to be upgrading your treatment plant in, on Jersey Street. Let's worry about that down the road, but since you're under the 20 pots per trillion, let's bring the water directly to the high school to solve the problem immediately. Take care of your interconnection separately from this process. At no time did we ever say we didn't know about the interconnection because the original plan back in April was the interconnection and that I did not want to get involved in the two and a half years to three years of permitting that was going to take to get that solution done. I wanted to get the stuff to the high school immediately. You're not hearing about the interconnection for the first time tonight.
No, clearly not.
It's been on the table for a long time.
The interconnection, absolutely. The piece of that that I didn't understand, and the fault may be entirely mine, is that through that interconnection, that there would be mixing of Dunstable and Pepperell water to service the high school. My understanding was that we were picking, or considering alternatives that either brought Pepperell water through the high school area to Dunstable. We would only be getting Pepperell water, or that it could go the other way. And there would be Dunstable water that would go through the high school area and go to Pepperell. And that we would be getting one, you know, either or.
And that's my fault.
I didn't understand that there was a, a mixing alternative.
Well, that, that's my fault for not explaining it clear enough. But I did not want to get involved because the permitting piece, and we were on the phone with DEP and, and Paul was part of that call, as, as was Jason. DEP said that the, that the interbasin transfer for anything over 100,000 gallons coming from Dunstable was going to be very difficult and was going to be costly in timing. And I remember specifically on that call, Paul said, I don't know if 100,000 gallons a day is worth a $10 million investment. Said that right on the call. At that point, I did not want to get involved in that permitting. Because that was something that Dunstable and Pepperell need to do, and that's great. I hope you do it. But my, my sole purpose was to get clean potable water to the Groton-Dunstable Regional High School as quickly as possible. I hope the interconnection works. I hope Pepperell gets, gets tons of water from Dunstable. But that doesn't solve the immediate problem, which Laura said they have to deal with DEP. And that's what we need to concentrate on today. Revisiting all this history for the last hour and 45 minutes isn't going to solve the problem. We need to come to a solution. These Boards, forget about the public, forget about me, forget about Jason, forget about Paul, forget about John. You five, seven people have to come to a solution. And that's what we need to concentrate on today. I'll get off my soapbox.
Yeah, agreed. Jack. Jack McCaffrey.
Jack McCaffrey, Chairman of Groton Water Commission. My son graduated from this high school first graduating class. My second one graduated more recently. They both recently told me, Dad, that water quality in this high school is so bad, the kids think it's a joke. It's been embarrassment to me and should be embarrassment to us. It's been almost 20 years and we have not addressed this. One thing that should be, we should realize is our engineering firm indicated that Groton today has clean water and you can get that water to the high school within 18 to 24 months. It's more 36 months and beyond when Pepperell could get it. That's for an independent person looking at the problem. So we get water to the people in the festival and to the people in the high, our kids in the high school at least a year sooner. I can tell you, as a person who deals with DEP, Bob Boswick, et cetera, and DEP, we get our decision made, we go to them. They could care less about the money. We're putting a treatment plant, we have an ACO. We, they don't even want to hear about the money. They want to hear about one thing. How do you get clean water to those people? Don't tell me bottled water. When is clean water going to get to the kids? And it's at least 18 months, 12 to 18 months sooner with the Groton option. Another factor, you look at the wells. You say, has it just happened, Stan's, our wells cleaner? You look at the Nash River Basin, Harvard, Air, Shirley, Devens, Pepperell runs down the Nash River Basin. They're all having a lot of fun with PFAS. We are in the Merrimack Basin, a totally different basin, as is Dunstable. We're, we together in the, in Merrimack Basin. We are a very different source of water. So we should realize that as we think of it. Because you look at Bemis and other wells along that same river.
I believe everybody can get the water where it needs to be. Like John said, you know, the standards are going to be the standards and over, some, some mixing, some spending, we're going to get there. Tonight, what I've heard is different than I heard last time that we discussed it. Is that we've, Groton has put forward a solution where Dunstable's held harmless on the additional cost. We all said that was okay. We, Groton said that was okay. Because again, if we, if we don't get the solution to Groton, the million dollars isn't there. So it's only there because of the water going to the school. So, the fact that someone said, well, why don't you put, give the money back to the ratepayers? Well, first of all, the ratepayers aren't going to be affected because the water is from the school. So there's, the million dollars comes up only because the water goes to the school. And so that's that. So the other thing I heard tonight that's completely different than I understood, and maybe it gets to what the Select Board was, we're talking about, was that I didn't understand, I thought it was a simple solution. Pepperell, Groton. I heard tonight that this is, there is money potentially for Dunstable by having the loop go through and therefore the Groton, the Pepperell-Dunstable somehow is going to be able to lower the rates because it's, it's some, and, and the ratepayers will pay less because the Dunstable and Pepperell solution could be, Dunst, without Groton, just the Dunstable-Perple solution. So, the line coming through, the way I heard it tonight, says that's going to benefit Dunstable and Pepperell. The other one, the Groton-Dunstable benefits Groton and Dunstable. And Pepperell is not in this picture. And that's why we talked, I think, two weeks ago about, someone said, well, let's get all the neighbors in it because it's a better thing for all of us. So we were on the assumption, I was, Groton-Dunstable-Perple. Not Pepperell-Dunstable-Groton. I mean, so I, I, that, that was new where there's money somehow coming into this system somehow because it's going to be better for Dunstable if in fact Pepperell connects in because in the end, the water's going to come from Dunstable down through that line and help out all your ratepayers, which Groton was willing to put in the other way. So, I think what we need to do is, is we can stop, I think we should stop talking about the water quality. We're going to get to the water quality, I believe, as a finance guy. We're going to get there. So we can talk about all of this stuff. So PFAS is PFAS, we're going to fix it. The next question is, what is the best deal for the towns? Groton is Dunstable said, we, Groton said, we think this is the best for Groton-Dunstable? You held harmless? Dunstable said, well, yeah, but there's this other way that's going to help us out more in the end if we go through the Pepperell. That's what I heard. Maybe I'm wrong. But that's what I heard because I'm, we're going to, Dunstable's going to pick up all the revenue from the, uh, the people on the PFAS down the back end on the other side of the school. So, if that's what the case is, we ought to talk about the money here, not, not all this other stuff because it's going to happen. So to me, it was a simple solution, I thought in the beginning. Groton-Dunstable or Pepperell. And Groton-Dunstable. So it was either Pepperell line or Groton line. Groton line to me is cheaper. I talked to Y today, and in the future, we control it. The Pepperell line is not cheaper today. Someone said, well, maybe it's going to be cheaper in the future. I don't understand why. But maybe those numbers need to be shown to say, why is this better for Groton as well as Dunstable? The other one's clearly better for Groton and Dunstable if we go through Groton because of the fact you're held harmless. I don't understand how the other one's going to be better for Groton. Maybe Dunstable and Pepperell, that's okay, but I don't understand how that's going to happen. So maybe we need to understand, you know, I don't think this is, we're ever going to get it done tonight. I think we're, we're in a do-loop here already. We're going down fast. I think we need to stop and say, okay, what's the next step? Do we need another meeting? Some people, a mini-group need to get together and understand this? I don't know. But this one, to me, we're, we're the standstillers. We start arguing about the same stuff over and over. It's like, it's just, no, it's not productive. So, my suggestion is, if we figure out what we need to do going forward to try to get this thing off the base, because I don't think it's going to happen tonight. And I would like to understand the Dunstable-Perple thing would help me as a finance person, because I didn't understand this before. And I don't want to do that here. I'd rather meet with someone on the side and talk about this. And then I can bring, and maybe a select person there too, and I can bring it back to the Select Board. Mark obviously should be there. So that's, I think we ought to figure out how we get out of this meeting sooner than later because I don't see us going anywhere.
We can come the Dunstable members.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah. I, I'd like to throw out here, and we can talk about it, but I'd like to throw out here that we set up a, a working group with a Select Board member, or, you know, Town Administrator, Town Manager, and maybe a member of the Water Commission. Sort of a working group to sit down and go over some of this, go over some of what we heard tonight. And to possibly, you know, work it out and find a path forward and, and to do it sooner than later. Because as Laura said, she's got the DEP breathing down her neck and she doesn't retire for another year, right? Or whatever it was. I'm just throwing that as a suggestion.
No, I, I think a working group would be a good idea. I know, Becky, you keep asking for the Board members to speak up, but, and I'm probably the only one that has not said anything tonight. I honestly don't want to beat a dead horse. We took a vote, what we believed would be the best solution several, a couple of months ago now. I can't say that I had necessarily swayed from that. If we've been hearing different things and you have, then we absolutely need to have this working group to sort out and get some better graphics as to what this line is actually going to look, look like. I think the Dunstable-Perple-Groton solution is attractive to me because, one, our ultimate goal is to solve the problem at the high school and the houses that are affected by that. Both solutions are going to do that. Though, there is a, there is a side benefit potentially for us. I'm not going to deny that. There's also a side benefit for Groton if you do it that way. So why should, you know, who gets to choose? Who gets the side benefit?
Well, maybe it will be possible to.
If we can do both, that would be fantastic. If we can do both, that would be fantastic. Pepperell needs help too, and we are partners with Pepperell for a couple of different things. And that, you know, there is this regional concept from a larger perspective, from the envi, I'm an environmental consultant, I'm a wetlands consultant. I want to see as many region areas be benefiting from this situation. You know, whatever, call me a tree hugger, I am, stickers on my car, it works. You know, I, I think it makes sense to try to solve this problem as a larger community and not just, well, Groton says it's going to be this way because our water's better. Well, at the end of the day, everybody's going to have to have that four-part-per-trillion result. We're going to have to, everybody is. You know, I don't think Pepperell is, um, shortsighted on that concept. They're making their plans in order to do so. I understand they're setting money aside to do that or raising it. I don't know all their finances, but, um, that's it. That's all I can say. But I, let's, let's get in that working group, darling.
So, Mark, here's a.
For the Groton Select Board, more meetings, great, I love meetings, I want to have meetings as well. But we have a deadline. You know, this board needs to make a decision on a ballot question, posting of a warrant, call for a special election, you need to know exactly what's going to be on that ballot question. You have a town meeting coming up, you need to know exactly what that warrant article's going to ask for. Because right now, the way the warrant article's written and the way the ballot question is written is for the Groton option. If we change that, then we need to get, I need to get, hold the line council, I need to figure out what's going on, the town clerk has to print ballots. We don't have a lot of time for a lot more meetings in terms of where we are. Just want to put that out.
Okay, so, so, um, let, let me ask this, let me say, ask this about that, all right? In terms of the time, you guys are under more time constraints than ER and PS at this point, although we're going to have a fall.
Not a whole lot, and we got DEP breathing down our neck too, so.
Yeah, so I think what we, what we, what we, what we would want to do is, is be sure that, if nothing else, we understand that time commitment in terms of, you know, what's the drop dead date? DEP needs a report that, that summarizes what the action plan's going to be for remediation. Groton's got some, uh, issues with, you know, town meeting and ballots and so forth. So I, I, and I'm not asking for that tonight, but soon, we want to understand that timeline. And I don't think we understand that timeline either. And so we want to be sensitive to that with all these discussions that we focus on what the, the time, I mean, there's, there's drop dead dates here that aren't moving and, um...
I, I'm optimistic that all, I think a lot can get accomplished, because there's a lot of information we have out there, it's sort of sorted and putting it together, and we know what those dates are, and that we can get those. I mean, I would imagine a working group sitting down and, and over the course of two or three meetings could come up with a recommendation.
Isn't it true that both towns need to have voted in favor of this plan before we can submit it to DEP? And that means, and that means a debt exclusion vote has to have passed.
So the, the debt exclusion for us is Pepperell's, because they're going to put the, that, that construction, that water line is on them.
How are you going to pay, how's Dunstable going to pay the sixty-four thousand dollars a year in debt service on the project?
Well, there would be, but I'm not sure that we're going to put that on the ballot for the, for the fall.
Then how can you commit, sign an IMA with Groton to commit to paying debt service on any project without that debt exclusion?
Yeah, no, absolutely, but we don't have an IMA yet either, and none of that.
Because we don't have an attorney to help us negotiate that, because we can't come to an understanding.
We have an attorney to help to negotiate our side, but, you know.
You pay him more than you do.
Let's get, let's get, let's get this.
Dr. Laura has a, has a comment here.
Just to help everybody get ready for Dunstable's time in this, at the end of May, we've got the time clock of a hundred and twenty days started going from the DEP. Not for an installation of a solution, but for a solution. So we're, you've got like another month?
No. The, the notice that we were, what is this? It's Ja, it's the end of January, is when we have, is the deadline for us to submit what our solution is to the DEP. And then there's a, then there's going, that's what the.
Then I'm going to have to go look back, because Sherry and I just talked. And they told us that we had a hundred and twenty days to respond.
A hundred and twenty days from when?
To respond for what, to what?
From when they gave us the, the, when, when the clock started ticking, which was the end of May.
But we, there is a letter that has a January date for a plan.
I think we need to look at that letter, it doesn't sound like they, they, that we have to respond back to them. Now, maybe there's response back to them as we're working with both towns to come up with a solution, blah, 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 blah. That may be, but, but I just don't want people to, to think that we have definite.
Yeah, either way, urgency's critical.
Yes, I agree with that.
And particularly if we need to, you know, need to go to town meeting.
I'm, I'm just saying, I, I will, I will look at my letter and compare it to your letter, but my letter said that I had a hundred and twenty days.
Well, it's your letter, they're both your letters. It's not my letter. They're both yours.
Well, we'll get what you're talking about and what we're talking about, but either way, worst case scenario, best case scenario, we're talking around the holiday time, that we need to come up with an, with an answer, right? Because you have to get bonding and you have to get.
We have a town meeting scheduled.
And we can't give a plan to DEP if we don't have the voters' approval to pay for it.
So, uh, working, I think we should identify a member from our, from our boards, um, and, you know, obviously, you have town administrators, town managers, a member of the water commission. Any thoughts?
How, how do, you've been doing a lot of stuff along the way? You want to jump on this?
I, I would be prepared to make a motion that we delegate Allison and Peter to be our representatives on a working group.
Second.
He seconded it.
Boy, Jason, would you buy one or two?
Keep in mind, if I can just make a suggestion, if this board votes to designate two members, under the open meeting law, all those working group meetings will have to be posted.
Oh, forget that, I rescind my motion.
Now, just modify.
Really, really?
Yeah.
As long as they just hold it with one another.
All right, so we have, we'll take a vote here. We have a motion, uh, Allison Manouwian's, uh, I guess nominated to serve in this group.
Oh, a subcommittee. Correct.
Next second, all right. Uh, equal discussion, but you. All's in favor?
Aye.
What did you guys just call, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Jason.
We voted Allison.
Allison.
No.
No, I don't want you to vote.
No, don't vote anything.
Anytime you vote to designate anybody,
Okay.
you have created a subcommittee, whether it's one member or five members.
I move that we, um,
Rescind that vote.
Rescind that vote.
Do we have a second? Second. Uh, any further discussion? We understand why, okay. All's in favor? Aye.
What I would ask you to do is ask the town manager of Groton and the town manager of Dunstable to put together a working group to address this problem immediately.
Okay.
And then Jason and I, I think I know which member of my board.
Have you understood what we're going to talk about tonight? Boy, handle that.
Jason, you okay?
I think that will trigger, I wouldn't.
Likewise, for your board.
Don't have to make any votes, don't make any votes.
No, no votes.
We have the direction. But what I want you to do is give a deadline to make a decision. And that decision should be September eighteenth.
Okay.
Do, do we have the?
Because we got town meeting.
Are the dates definitive enough for us to commit to that as a reasonable date? Or is that going to come back after we've looked at letters?
Well, I'll tell you. I, I'm going to find the letter, but I pretty much agree with Jason that the letter said we have to notify DEP with a solution by January twenty-fourth or sometime in January. But we have a posting of a warrant that has to be done by August, October first, right? So I need to make sure that whatever warrant articles we draft, whatever ballot questions that I get to the town clerk to print, is giving me enough time to do that. And if you make the decision on October first, that doesn't give me enough time. I need you to make a decision by September eighteenth to give me enough time.
To use the currently scheduled town meeting?
Correct. Unless you want to rescind the town meeting and the special election recall.
I mean, what is, I guess my, my question or concern regarding that would be, I don't know what Dunstable's timeframe is. I don't want to put us in a situation where we're agreeing to create a solution by September eighteenth, but Dunstable has until late November. And now, we're having question, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're all moving forward with the state.
With Dunstable, with Dunstable, with that deadline?
Yeah, I mean, we were tentatively planning a fall town meeting for, I think it's the thirteenth or something, it's like the second Monday in November. November. But I got to be honest, like, I wasn't planning on, I was planning on doing it at our annual, at our annual next year.
Well, that's why.
Because you could, if, if we get it in till the end of January, let's just say we, that, how long are they going to take to review it? I don't know. Does anyone know how long that takes? I, I don't know. I'm just from a timeline pers- perspective.
For DEP to review a plan?
For DEP to review what we submit to them.
So the SRF applications were due in August, um, the draft intended use plan comes out in January, and then the final plan comes out April. I'm going to assume that Pepperell's project and Groton's project is going to make that list. You have to have the SRF funding in place, which we do. We want to amend that to a lower number. I think Pepperell, you had, you passed your town meeting vote in the spring, so we're both suited to start spending money once it becomes available sometime in June. But you have to have plans complete, and we're working on our plans. They're doing their pilot.
Okay, so SRF.
Our plans are, are, you know, thirty percent complete.
So SRF in June, we're saying?
Yep, yep.
So that would be enough time to have everything ready to go, just because I can't spend that sixteen million dollars without a debt exclusion vote. So I need a debt exclusion, well, whatever. We can't spend that without a, without a debt exclusion vote. So this board called for a debt exclusion in November.
Yeah.
But I want to have the right number, so that's why we put an article on the warrant for the lower the sixteen to twelve.
Tom.
How long will it take DEP to?
That's what I was going to ask.
How long will it take DEP to review what we submit to them at the end of January?
It, it depends on the size of the project. If it's vertical construction, it's going to be a lot more time-consuming to review plans and specifications. If it's horizontal, like a water main, it's pretty simple. You turn it around in a couple of months. We, we plan on hitting the ground in July.
Mark's point is, how can you, how can you ask me to send something in our January quarter if we don't know that we have the funding for that?
Right.
That's why we have to do it in the fall.
Right.
That's, that's, that's why this board set the time of the fall vote. It's, it's, listen, it seems to me that we have bandied about a lot of information. There's, there's, there's a lot of knowns here. It's just getting a consensus. So I think September eighteenth is doable. I really do.
Yeah, I agree.
It's not like we're going to have brand-new information, where all of a sudden it's going to be, oh, look at this.
Right.
I think that was tonight's, tonight's meeting, so I think we can do it.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of information out there, I think. I think, I think a working group can, can fashion that demand, or that we can, we can work on it and work with it.
I think, I think, Jason, I think you're going to have to seriously consider having an article.
Yeah, no, no, now my wheels are spinning a little bit.
All right, I think we're good.
So is agreement with September eighteenth as a drop dead date to make a decision?
Well, if that's your dead drop dead date, it's not an agreement, it's going to happen.
Well, I'm asking, I'm making sure we're all comfortable, ready to go, September eighteenth.
Yeah. That, that gets us into our situation with, with town meeting and needing discussion election, stuff like that. But I think it's doable, I think two to three meetings of this group, I think could, could hammer it up.
So that September eighteenth though would be, we would be looking at a, a vote either for the two boards together or two separate meetings, the two votes, right, Mark?
Listen, I think it's great that we all get together, and I think
Yeah.
we should invite Dunstable to come to Groton on the eighteenth, so that you guys can meet board session again to make a final decision. I think you should do it in the same room at the same time with all the information before you, because having separate meetings, I, then we're going to have.
Scott, that's his point.
Let's all be in the room together. My suggestion.
Okay, but you, what, let me say this about that. You need a decision by the eighteenth, right, Mark?
I want to know, and I'm just saying, I'm not being a mess in the town clerk, if that works for us, so.
So when we go to the, to the Groton Select Board meeting, that decision's going to be cast?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So the working group would need to have a solution?
A week before.
The eleventh or something?
Yeah, the eleventh.
Right.
So we got to get going right away. We got to start meeting immediately. I will talk to Jason first thing tomorrow morning, I will talk to Allison, I'm sure you'll talk to whoever you need to talk to, and I'm going to want Tom and John to participate, and I want Bob to participate, and we're going to get going immediately. Okay, we have to work consecutive days or nights or whatever, we'll get it going.
Okay.
Can that. The time of your meetings? Right.
Whenever you want them.
No, you're on the eighteenth.
Oh, seven o'clock. But we can start at five if you want, and eighteen, I love this five o'clock meeting.
What about eight-thirty in the morning?
I like that even better.
Can that, can that working group potentially kind of stick around to talk a little bit about hours or times or days or?
Oh, do you need tonight's?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
The eighteenth works for our town clerk for the ballot question, Peter.
Okay.
Go ahead, just respond.
All right, anything else? All right, so we're going to, the joint meeting will conclude. The Dunstable Select Board will go into recess for ten minutes, because we have some business matters here that got to get worked over.
You guys have a chance to talk about the working group?
Yeah, our board is going to recess for ten minutes. And for those who are here tonight, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate the discussion and the involvement, it's, it's great.
Yeah, I'd like, I also appreciate, I appreciate your, I guess hospitality and having us over here, and, and while at basic, we went circles a lot, I think we actually made some progress.
We're not going to do it.
Good enough, so, so I, uh... All right, I can entertain a motion. We are going to take a vote. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. All right, Mr. Mike, we're going to have, pick up our business meeting at this point, so if you guys need to talk or whatever. Done. Ten minutes was ten minutes ago. All right. Back on the select, public forums, anybody? All right, um, town IT management, Mr. Jason, you want to bring us up to speed on that, please?
Yeah, thank you. So, as the board knows, I've been talking with the town of Tingsborough, we've had So, as the board knows, I've been talking with the town of Tinsborough, we've had several meetings. And during that process, our current member had reached out, I had had, I had updated them on where we were at, and they have sharpened their pencil on their original quote and have given us a quote. You have a draft contract in your, in your folder, in your binder.
September four.
Which essentially meets our budget, which is nice. And so, so, given the fact that they are basically, they have notified us that they do not, they are not comfortable with doing the month-to-month arrangement and this month, August, would be the last time we want to do with that arrangement. And the fact that, in order for me to be comfortable with making a transition, I think would probably take us a month or two more of work to make sure we understand the services that can be provided by Tinsborough and to make sure that there are no add-on costs that we may incur down the road. All that said, I'm hoping that you'll consider essentially renewing the contract with Umbrell Technologies to provide IT management. And I want to thank Sue for really kind of leading us and kind of deciphering the differences between the two and ultimately helping me come to a conclusion. So it's thank you really for that.
No, that's good, it sounds like it would be good service.
So are you, as a being that we move forward with Umbrell?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Simmons?
Just IT services, what, what does town, what does that do for the town here? What does that involve? I guess I don't, I don't even have the smart ones.
It's electronic infrastructure, so all the data across it, yeah. The server that's upstairs and the email server and all that kind of stuff needs to be supported. And I think Umbrell.
Security, software install, software updates, antivirus, email hosting, like, all of those things fall under this umbrella.
Anything that we are running, being on TV or anything, you know? Anything that affects the.
So that's, yeah, that's separate. We'd love to, we still are kind of working towards that. Actually, the, the Pepperell access has actually been pretty helpful with that, but we're, we're not quite there yet.
And our friends in Groton.
And our friends in Groton.
They have been great too.
Absolutely.
Do you have a motion?
I don't.
So would we be hoping to authorize you to enter into agreement?
That would be, I would appreciate that, yeah.
I'll make a motion to go forward with Umbrell Technologies and to have our town administrator enter into agreement with said company.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, treasure collector position.
I put this on the agenda because I was not sure where we, where we would be in the process. We are still conducting due diligence and Pepperell's working on setting a second interview up, so nothing, no action went on quite right for that yet.
Okay, so that's it then?
Okay.
Any others?
No.
We all said no.
I was laughing.[1787.54]